Item number 19, Office of Budget and Management submitting additional appropriations, appropriation transfers, and cash transfers.
Good morning Commissioners, Matt Rabinow, Office of Budget and Management submitting the weekly fiscal agenda for your approval.
Roll call please.
Approving the fiscal items, Commissioner Demora.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioners, I'd like to take this opportunity to point out some good news that's occurred. We now have the public release of our certified audits for calendar year 2007 and calendar year 2008, certified by Mary Taylor, Auditor of State of Ohio, and on the state's public website as certified, clean, and released to the public. And Matt Rabinow and Steve Lutzke, Steve is one of the famous accountants that I rehired, he's actually a certified public accountant, as is Cheryl Arcellanian, are here to tell you what this means to the county.
Steve, thanks.
Good morning, everyone. This day has taken a long time to occur. I've been here 20-some years, 27 years in the county, and I never waited so long to have an audit released. But under the circumstances, we were aware that there would be some delays, and obviously the delays went on a little longer than we anticipated. But the bottom line is, is that Cogge County's audits have been released. The opinions for both 2007 and 2008 were unqualified opinions, which means that our financial statements are a fair presentation of the financial records of Cogge County. During the course of an audit, auditors come in, review your records, look at your financial statements, review, do sample testing. That includes items like your purchasing policies and other things, and determine whether there's any material weaknesses that would not allow them to issue an unqualified opinion. If they determine that those items are all in compliance, then at that point, they issue their opinion, and if the opinion is ours is, it means that we, our financial statements are, again, a fair presentation of how Cogge County looked in 2007 and 2008. We're very pleased with the results. I do want to thank some people along the way, the county auditor's office staff that worked on that, Cheryl Arcellanian's name was mentioned earlier, she was involved in all those processes, the management of Cogge County, they give us the support, Commissioners, my direct boss, Jim McCafferty, Dave Lambert, who I think I spoke with perhaps more times in the last two years than I had in the first 20 years. So, we want to say that we're very pleased and proud that this occurred, but our financial statements keep going on, it's not the end of the road, we are continuing it on, we're currently working on the 2009, and we expect the results to be similar, at least we're hoping that that will be the case. We'll know that when the audit is complete for 2009.
It's also very good timing, we are going to be accessing the capital markets, probably beginning of August, to do some refunding and some economic development bond issuance. We have the Medmark project, we'll be going to the markets for that. This is one more thing we can check off the list, it's very important to investors, especially larger institutional investors, to have fresh annual audits. So this gets us through 2008, which meets that requirement, and we actually were just meeting with our underwriters yesterday to do some planning, and they all agree that once these were released, that makes it easier to market the bonds overall. I mean, there are challenges for any bond issue, but this is a big item that we can add to the list of things that are done, and will be very beneficial to us.
And Matt, what is our bond rating from Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor &amp; Fitch?
We are double-
Related to the highest, but what is the highest bond rating you can get, and what is our bond rating?
We are AA1 with Moody's, AAA would be the highest, we're AA+ with both Standard and Poor &amp; Fitch, and AAA would be the highest rating with those respective agencies.
So with all three, we're second highest rating?
Yes.
Let me make this observation for the press. It's just as evil to corrupt the public mind as it is to steal from the public purse. As someone who's served in county government for 22 years, you have every right under the First Amendment to pursue individual conduct of anyone who works for the county, including elected officials. That is your obligation in a free society. The whole is all accountable. Today, at least with respect to these audits, 8,000 people work here, including these gentlemen and others, and I would hope that you would make a distinction with respect to all of this, that this idea of quote "county corruption" is an insult to 8,000 people who work every day for the citizens in this community. Seems to me that you have an obligation, if you're going to be objective about covering government, to make distinctions. Now, we just have an audit. The audit says in 2007 and 2008, we're fiscally responsible, and we did it by the numbers, and we did it in the best interest of the citizens of this community. There is no question about it, it's an independent audit.
Oh yeah.
By a Republican auditor who authorized Deloitte to do the audit. So what I would suggest, if I could, because I'm leaving public life in five months, that the decent and honorable people that work in this county, whether they work in the auditor's office, or whether they work in the budget department, or wherever they work, you should at least give them the respect they're entitled to as public servants. To paint everybody with the same brush is to diminish the dedicated work of many of the people who every day give of themselves for this community. And so, just for the purposes of fairness, and honesty, and covering this, it is just as evil to corrupt the public mind about those who work in government as it is to steal from the public purse. And you ought to underscore that. If you're going to investigate me individually, that's fine. That doesn't mean the rest of the people in this room integrity's questioned. You can question mine, but you don't have the right to paint everybody that works for a county government with the same brush. And it seems to me that this audit at least expresses, in my view, the dedication of thousands of people who work every day to make sure that we do our, fulfill our obligations as public servants. I would beg the press to try to be a little bit more sophisticated about the coverage. It's insulting to a lot of people. I'm out of this business, and there's nothing that anybody can write or say that's going to unravel my relationship with my children and the people I care about. But it seems to me that the people who will remain here and serve this community have a right to demand that the press cover these things without painting everybody with the same brush. You don't say that there's corruption in the city of Cleveland because somebody is indicted there. You don't say that there's corruption at the state when ODOT people are indicted. You don't say that Metro Health, there's corruption at Metro Health. What you say is, it's all of us, county, we're all responsible. It's insulting. It's insulting to the good and decent people who every day get up and work in this community for the people of this, the citizens of this community. So this at least expresses, in my view, for 2007 and 2008, that this audit says unequivocally that we have reacted in a responsible way as public servants with respect to safeguarding the taxpayers' money. And I just would hope that that would be the message that's expressed after today with respect to at least two audits. I'll give you odds that this will not be on the front page of The Plain Dealer tomorrow.
Mr. President, I just want to say that the audit speaks for itself. This is what we all knew to be the case, being that I'm the one that's targeted with regard to this investigation. I've said it time and time again, I've done nothing wrong, I've done nothing to steer any contracts, and as been indicated, I think Mr. Lutzke said it, we've awarded to all low bid contracts, all the best bidders, all sealed bids, with regard to some of our awards through the Commissioners' office. It is really mind-boggling to me that even in today's story, The Plain Dealer once again wants this indicator make a distortion of the facts, that I've used my position as a county commissioner to steer a contract to Phoenix Cement when they were the lowest bidder on the Juvenile Justice Center. They were recommended by the staff, by the construction management team. I did nothing to do any kind of lobbying for that contract. That was the contract that was presented to us as the lowest and best bid. There was a change order to the contract because the project expanded. Now, we cannot get our facts out. The media wants to keep distorting the facts and not tell the truth. Look at the companies that don't do business with the county. It is, as Commissioner Hagan has said, everybody and everything is labeled county corruption in Jimmy Demora, or Frank Russo, or a combination of both. And it's really appalling. I've put 30 years in public service, and I've not been treated properly by the media, and it's unfortunate. And I hope other people, which I'm sure they are and I hear on a regular basis, get discouraged about wanting to be in public office. Why would you want to go through this? Why would you want to be under a microscope every time you make a decision? Because I even live in the city of Independence, I have to ask the prosecutor, because I'm under this microscope of the Jimmy Demora rule and everybody else's rule, that I have to be subjected to, and it's not right. And the media, you have added to that. You have distorted the facts, and you have not told the truth. This audit shows, we have not misappropriated funds like Stark County or Portage County, our audit is clean. I've done nothing wrong, and I've said that over and over again. And I'm going to continue to say that, and I'm going to defend myself to the day I die. I've not taken any money, I've not steered any contracts, I've not rigged any bids, like the PD or some of these other media outlets want to distort and try to put in the minds of the people of this community. It is not true, and it is not right, what you are doing to a public official who has done nothing but tried to help people, day in and day out, in my capacity of public office. Help people, not asking for things in return. If I did get a gift, I disclosed it. I didn't hide it, I disclosed it. I held the position of the chairman of the Democratic Party, as well as an elected position as county commissioner, and I disclosed any gift that I received, or any discount that I received. Most of the people that are involved in this investigation do no business with Cogge County, with my colleagues or myself. But you will not put that fact out there. And it's just mind-boggling to me, to my family, when we read the things that we read, or we see the things that we see, how distorted and untrue they are. When they talk about fairness, and truth, and honesty on these news reports, it's not true. It is totally not true. So, we'll continue to do our job up here, as we have been, fair, and honest, and independent. And with the work of our staff, and Commissioner Hagan's right, these people in this county are dedicated public officials. When I started in Cogge County in 1999, we had 10,600 employees. Now we have 8,100. We have lessened the public cost of doing business, and still providing vital and critical services to the people of this community, and doing it in an efficient and effective way. And so I commend our employees for having the patience and the understanding, as Commissioner Hagan has mentioned, to continue to move forward, and continue to do an admirable and commendable job in helping the people of this county. We're going to have problems from time to time, and in a government this size, that's going to happen. But again, to distort the facts and not tell the truth to the public is really an injustice that's been done to me over the past two years, and to the entire county workforce, to my colleagues, and to everybody that works in Cogge County. So hopefully today, at least the electronic media, because we can't look for the print media to tell the truth, or tell the facts the way they are, maybe the electronic media will do a justice today, talk about the facts, and talk to these people afterwards if you have individual questions about any contracts. These are people that I have no relationship with, other than I see them, I know them, they've been working here for many years before I got here, and they're all good, dedicated people who want to do the right thing. They're not going to be told by anybody to do something wrong. And I have not done that, nor have my colleagues. So the audit speaks for itself, I'm tired of talking about it. You know, we're going to continue to move the government forward, the new leaders of the government will have their work cut out for them, and I hope that they get a fair shake at least to try to move this government forward. This was a government that was working, and now it's been dismantled. It's been dismantled totally. A government that had the best bond rating, or second best in the state of Ohio, only behind Franklin County, with less employees since 1999, 2,500 less employees, balancing our budget each and every year, providing critical and vital services to this community, and it's been dismantled. And it's now going to be put into a different government, which hopefully it works, for the sake of all of us that live in Cogge County. But I know it's going to be a challenge, because the three of us know how difficult it is when it's just three people running the government, now you're going to have 12. And so, good luck to that future government. But again, this government was running efficiently, effectively, and as the audit, and as Commissioner Hagan pointed out, it was a Republican state auditor that released this information. So it's not anything where Jimmy Demora, as the Democratic chairman, former chairman, or commissioner, had any sway with Mary Taylor, or her staff, or our people, as they know, they were pulling teeth and ripping their hair out to get this audit released, because they knew that the audit was a good audit, and we wanted that message out. Now you have it. I hope you tell the truth about the facts for a change.
Does any member of the media have any questions that they wish to pose relative to the audits? If so, feel free to ask them now.
Can you address the information technology? Have changes been made there? We talked about it a little bit before the meeting.
The comment that was in the report related to, I don't have the response that what happens is when there's an issue that is brought up in the audit, and there's always issues. There's things, because of the size of the government, and besides all the responsibilities, there are always some issues that need to be addressed. Nobody does a perfect job. I don't have the response back that Dan Weaver would have provided. I don't know, so I don't have that in front of me to see, but I'd be happy to talk to Dan, or at least get the responses back on those comments that happened in '07 and '08. I believe that that was the only thing on the report.
Paul, we can get to this after.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Generalfie, thank you very much for the opportunity. To follow up on Commissioner Demora's request for us to be as accurate as we can be, can you tell our viewers if your auditor, the state's auditors specifically looked at whether or not any commissioners received any benefit or favor in return for contracts? Was that a specific part of an audit?
It's not a specific part of an audit. What auditors do is they do sampling. They go through documents, Commissioner Demora pointed out, purchasing, that would be one of them. They would go through a sample of documents, looking for information. What they're really trying to measure is control. Are there proper controls in place to prevent things from occurring? Nobody, no audit would tell you 100% certainty that something didn't occur. All an audit can do is say, based on the controls you have in place, we think that the controls are reasonable to prevent things from occurring. And that's what they do in an audit, and that's what, in our case, the audit was conducted by the accounting firm of Deloitte &amp; Touche, on behalf of the auditor of state. The audit opinion was actually produced by Deloitte &amp; Touche, our auditors. So based on their view, and their testing of the data in the county, they thought our controls were adequate.
Ron, I would also point out, the way audits are done in the state of Ohio, there's two options. The auditor of state, him or herself can have their staff come in and do the audit, or they can pick the outside firm that does the audit, and then the entity being audited pays the bill for the audit. So with our size, there are only two options. Was this auditor of state doing this herself, having her staff come in? Or was Deloitte &amp; Touche, because they're the only audit firm large enough that still does public auditing, that could do it? She chose to have Deloitte &amp; Touche, as she has in the past, come in and do it. She really works for the auditor of state, that Deloitte &amp; Touche did. Though they were very close, and with us constant contact with them, however, we did pay the bill for the audit. And as has been pointed out, some extra bills that we had to pay. But it isn't truly an independent audit by outside entity. It does not report to us, but reports to the auditor of state.
Commissioner Demora, you may-
If I might, just one further response to your question, probably Ron Blake, Richard Blake, attorney Richard Blake, probably provided the closest thing to what you're asking about. And I was, and I'm one who generally, when I read editorials, articles, or see something in the electronic media, even when I vehemently disagree, often tend just to bite the bullet and move forward, and kind of ignore to the extent possible whatever comments were made, if I feel they're pretty far afield. But I must confess, I was absolutely perplexed by the Sunday editorial in The Plain Dealer that criticized the Board of Commissioners for approving the Richard Blake contract, saying that it was evidence of, I believe, arrogance and lack of transparency. And for the life of me, I don't know what was arrogant about the statement by the vote, or the statement that I made, that I'm satisfied with, that we need to pay this bill. My satisfaction was a function of the fact that they had done the work, they had properly billed for the work, and the work needed to be done in order to give county commissioners, county staff, and the public the assurance that they are, that we are all collectively entitled to, to make sure that our processes were appropriate, and that no contracts that had been let, or would subsequently be let, should be questioned in terms of their integrity and how appropriate they were. And obviously, we were representing in contracting with Richard Blake, we were looking out for the best interests of the public, so the citizenry could be comfortable about the decisions, contracting decisions, that we are required to make. And in terms of transparency, I don't see how there could have been more. The bill is a matter of public record, if anybody cares to review it. The vote was taken in public. There had been, over a period of probably a year since we had first contracted with Richard Blake, discussions about the scope of what, public discussions about the scope of what he was reviewing, and I believe that Richard Blake himself had several times been at the podium here in a public session to describe precisely the approach he was taking, and what he was looking for. So, that editorial seemed so incredibly gratuitous in terms of undeserved criticism of a very simple, straightforward vote. There was no ledger demand, no prestidigitation, there was no display of talcum powder to obscure the realities. We were quite straightforward, and how the board could be accused of acting arrogantly or without regard to the public interest and the right to know is absolutely unfathomable. And again, I'm one who generally lets things pass, even when my family tends to get agitated. My son asked me, my oldest son asked me, "What is this editorial about? What are they trying to say?" And I tried to interpret it the best I could, what their, the newspaper's perspective would be, but that editorial couldn't have been more wrong. I would echo my colleague's observation. Editorial writers and editorials, a great quote was, "They come down from the mountain after the battle to shoot the wounded." An observation about editorial writers being individuals who have no responsibility, except perhaps pursuing truth. And here is a terrific example, as Peter just points out. We spend money to assure the public of our consistency and the integrity of the system. If we didn't do it, they would write an editorial saying, "We're neglecting our responsibility to assure the public of the integrity of the system." So you're damned if you do, damned if you don't, in a political arena. And here's the most discouraging thing to me. When you challenge somebody in the media, individually, or their institution, your credibility is then, you're pushed aside and dismissed, because they have the moral imperative. They are divinely inspired, they're on the side of truth. And I would respectfully say to the people of this community, that's just not true on occasion. There are efforts made on the part of the media and the Plain Dealer to get readers. And what is happening in this country is expressed through the cable, television, and what is happening is how we're informing each other of how we govern in a democratic society. And ratings, and getting attention are part of that game. And when people in public life raise questions about it, what happens is, people then in the press turn on them, and make them the subject of the debate, rather than the intellectual argument that's put forward. And so consequently, as Peter just points out, there is no honest assessment, an honest debate anymore in our communities. It is a quick expression, and condemnation, or a belittlement of the process. And I would just respectfully say that when you challenge people in the media, it's not a question of saying, "I'm against the First Amendment," or that "I don't believe in a free press." I do. But you should be challenged when you present to the public a view that is, in my judgment, at many times inconsistent with the facts. And that's an obligation that people have to try to embrace, if you're going to have an honest debate in a society. And I fear, as we've seen nationally, that locally, we've lost our perspective of saying to people in public life, that, "Put me aside, I'm gone from this business." But for the future of people who are in this business, that they ought to be given the benefit of the doubt unless their credibility and their integrity is proven otherwise. Now we have to prove that we're honorable. Our posture in the public arena is such that we've got editorial people sanctimoniously sitting over there in The Plain Dealer, who in my judgment, half of them don't even know what the county government does. And they make comments about it. And let me underscore this. If the person who is responsible, putting aside the Board of County Commissioners, for the way they have treated the Children and Family Services Department, and the efforts made every day for them to sit over there sanctimoniously and write editorials, and they've never done a thing in their life except write editorials, or cover the news, and they attack the social workers and people who have given their life for 25 and 30 years, without knowing the facts. If we're wrong, kick the living hell out of us, and challenge us. I don't have any objection to that. But what I object to is gratuitous attacks on people who work in the government, and no one can respond in their defense, because if you respond in their defense, then you're being self-serving, or whatever the new term of the day is. So I agree totally, that if you put these things in perspective, and all of us have an obligation to do our jobs. If there's going to be integrity in journalism, the journalists have the responsibility to have integrity, just as much as those of us who ask to serve in public life. We should hold each other to a standard, and when the standard is one-sided, the public suffers because of that. And the public cannot perceive what is the truth, when the truth is at times distorted or not presented in a way that is being honest about the subject presented, put before them. So I would hope these efforts here to try to indicate that good and honorable people have worked pretty hard, put aside the elected officials here, if you'd like, to make this county work, and I'm proud to be a part of the efforts of all of you who work every day on behalf of the people of this community. on behalf of the people of this community.
Commissioner, can I ask, Mr. Leeskey, on the audit itself, on Deloitte and Touche and on the controls, and this is, Commissioner DeMora, I'm not talking about any of the contracts that you've brought up, but there were some other contracts that have been questioned in this investigation, whether the county overpaid by millions of dollars for these contracts. There's been questions about hiring practices. Were there any suggestions, I haven't read the audit, were there any suggestions from the auditors about controls on contracting or controls on hiring?
There were none, as far as those issues go. Now, they did not address the issue of the value of a particular contract I think you're referring to, partly because there's an investigation ongoing. And I think it's difficult for, even in this case, our auditors to get involved in situations in which there's an ongoing investigation and there might be certain issues for legal reasons that they don't want to deal with. I can't say that for certain. I don't know what kind of discussions they had with any of the legal people. But all I'm saying is that specifically, no, they didn't address that particular issue. Our hiring, normally hiring practices are not... That's more related to performance audit issues. There is a performance audit that is ongoing now with the county auditor's office. And issues like that would be addressed in that kind of forum. But the issue of that, again, the value of a contract and services that might have been provided for that, that is, again, more tied into the legal issues that are out there. I think Richard Blake did address that issue in his report.
Commissioner DeMora, you've made previous remarks, I think, suggesting that Auditor Taylor was either delaying or withholding or somehow involved in the auditing process and had some political motivations here. Given the fact that you've got a finding here that seems to vindicate, exonerate support, I mean, do you still believe that's true? Do you still believe there was politics involved in the timing and handling of this?
Yes, definitely. It shouldn't have taken two years to get an audit released. I mean, nothing changed. Nothing happened any different. Only thing that was done was people's emails were looked at. We had to, with the help of the prosecutor's office, retain Mr. Blake, because the auditing firm wanted additional assurances on anybody that was ever mentioned in the paper. They had to go through everybody's tax records. They had to go through the property valuations. They had to go to their property records, through every contract award. I think that this could have definitely been out.
So this audit delved into your, this audit delved into your personal information?
Yeah, they went through all kinds of things.
I mean, you personally?
I'm assuming. Am I targeted? Yeah, I am assuming. I mean, you know as much as I know. I don't talk to those folks, so I have no idea. But I'm assuming that, you know, they went through all of our property tax records. They went through all kinds of records, from what I understand.
Tom, I want to be clear about one thing. Jimmy and I disagree with this, about this. I don't think Mary Taylor or Deloitte gratuitously or held the thing up just to hold it up. I think, I think I'm being consistent with Jimmy's view about one thing, and that is, is that because of the investigations, they did not want to release an audit unless they explored it to a comfort level so that when the audit was released, the questions that are being raised legitimately about contracts and all the rest, that they could address that. And I think that was legitimate on their part, given the umbrella that was being covered by responding to the press, et cetera. There's a difference of opinion. I just, we have a difference of opinion about what their job was and how they were executing.
You just think they were being thorough?
I think, yeah. I think they were trying to be thorough, because, remember this, if I worked for Deloitte and I was looking, and I have a national reputation, I think that what they want to do is, when they put their imprimatur on the document, they want to say that they've explored every possibility. And I think that was fair. Now, I think Commissioner DeMora's determination is legitimate in the sense of saying, "Well, why did it, why has it taken so long?" Honorable people can disagree about that. I disagree, because if I were the auditor, state auditor, if I was Deloitte, I would make sure that my reputation is safeguarded when I issued the document. So just so we're clear about that. But I think it's an interesting intellectual discussion here. But the end result is, 2007 and 2008, we have an audit that is independently assessing the conduct of the people who work for Cogga County. And it says unequivocally that those two audits have been verified as consistent with the law and consistent with the policies that have been put in place. And I think that in itself expresses something that we ought to be proud of and continuously indicate the kind of commitment and surprise people that work for the county.
Just again, my disagreement with Commissioner Hagan is I think it could have been sooner. That's all I'm saying, than having to wait two years for the audits to be released. I think it could have been released sooner. The key, again, is, as Commissioner Hagan said, the bottom line. All low bid contracts awarded, all in compliance, no misappropriation of funds, no recommendations. Unlike Stark County or Portage County, which are neighboring counties, have problems with their particular audits with misappropriation of funds, with contract awards. We don't have anything like that. We've said that right along. I've said that from July 28th of 2008. I've said that right along. And today, that's what the audit is saying. They're all the low bids. They've all been awarded properly. They're all in compliance. Change orders, I mean, that has always been a big issue. Change orders go through a whole slew of people. Staff and other people that are hired by the county to help with particular projects. They are vetted. Then they're brought back to us as far as what their recommendation is. I have always, and unequivocally, have always followed the recommendation of the staff and the people that we hire to do work with the staff. Unequivocally, that has been my position for the twelve years that I've been here. Ninety-nine percent of the time, as you've seen through the record, the three of us vote in unison, three to zero. My colleagues have said it over and over. I've never approached them or said to them, lobbying for a contractor or for a job for anybody. That process is done very thoroughly, which we have a different process than other elected officials have with regard to hiring. We have a much more complicated and a sophisticated, in my opinion, process with regard to scoring for hiring. I don't know what else to tell the media. You know, you have your own opinions and your own mindset. The facts are the facts, whether you like it or not. And I am very comfortable in my position and my capacity as a public official in this county and what I've done in my track record. I have no regrets, you know, no reservations or hesitations. I've done everything that I believe to be above reproach. And I contend again, whether you want to believe it or not, I've done nothing wrong with regard to my official capacity as the county commissioner. And again, the Democratic Party's audits have been released as well. All have been clean. I think all of you received a copy of that for three years. Mary Taylor did that audit. The state auditor actually did that audit. All those records, no recommendations, no misappropriations of funds. Okay, so those, as Commissioner Hagan said, speak for themselves. You know, review it. I don't know, maybe The Plain Dealer will figure out a way how to distort the audit now. I don't know. That'll be, I guess that'll be their opportunity of the day to figure out how to screw up and distort the audit so that they can write another story to say that something's wrong with it.
Commissioner, you've been very forthcoming with saying that you've been a target. Do you think the audit helps you in that case?
I'm sure it does. It's what we do, it's what we've done in '07 and '08, and prior to that, and after that. It's all the same. You sit through the meetings, you've seen what we do. Recommendations come in, you see how we vote. Typically, it's a three-to-zero vote. Very seldom is it two-to-one. I think The Plain Dealer is keeping a scorecard, when Hagan and myself agree on things, and Jones disagrees, or vice versa. It's very, very few times...
I love playing the role of the minority. I've had fifty-seven years of experience.
Very few times, very few times.
Minority actor, I might say.
With major league talent, I might say.
Three more.
I think I'm going to go into acting too. To be my, what do they call it?
Agent.
Supporting agent.
Are there any other questions?